And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I be seated? Gentlemen, you see the agenda that has been put before you tonight? There will be any corrections or additions or changes in the agenda? Not hearing any, do I have a motion that we approve the agenda as read?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes, those opposed. Agenda's been set, Madam clerk. It's been a great pleasure tonight to start off our meeting with a few presentations and recognitions of some folks who have had such a great influence of our community in Smithfield and in our entire county. We consider them not only to be great contributors, but also good friends, people who we will miss as they're not with us in body, but definitely here with us in spirit. And first proclamation that I would like to present is to the family of Mr. Wade Stewart. And I'd ask Jenny and sons that come forward. This family needs no introduction to this board, and probably not to this community either. We lost Mr. Wade here a few weeks ago, and he was a dear friend of all of us here in the county, and I know that dear family members remember to you. But it does give us great privilege to proclaim to you of our friendship and missing him. And I'd like to read this to you guys if I can. This is a proclamation in memory of Johnston County Commissioner Wade M. Stewart. Whereas the Towne Smithfield wishes to show sorrow for the passing of Wade M. Stewart, faithfully serving citizens of Johnston County since 1998. And whereas during the tenure as Johnston County Commissioner, Wade Stewart promoted public service with a passion for serving the citizens, for the emergency workers, for veterans, and building schools with the children of Johnston County. And whereas the Towne Smithfield is deeply indebted to Wade Stewart, who has served through our community. And whereas Wade M. Stewart's service was given with such devotion that he earned the respect, the admiration, and the friendship of all the citizens of the Towne Smithfield through his professional leadership and dedication. Now therefore, I, Daniel Evans Jr., the Mayor of the Towne Smithfield, along with the members of this council, recognize Wade M. Stewart's many contributions to the Towne Smithfield and its citizens. We hereby express our deep appreciation for his dedication and extend to this family, you guys, our sincere sympathy and love at this time. We thank you to your family, and we thank you for Wade's dedication.
Thank you.
Doctor Mr. Smith, what did you do for us?
Good.
Good new commission.
Good. Just look there.
Congratulations.
In addition to the family of Mr. Stewart, we also have someone else who did make such a contribution to our community, and Ms. Irene Dublin. And if Ms. Dublin's family's here, Mr. Dublin would ask that you come forward. Likewise, as we mentioned earlier, I think one of the first recognitions I did as Mayor was someone making a difference in our community was Ms. Irene. She didn't mind telling me what I did on here sometimes, but we want to honor her and give recognition from this council as well as our community for this proclamation. And I'd like to read it to you elaborately. Whereas on behalf of the Towne Smithfield, we wish to extend our sincere condolences over the passing of Ms. Irene Penny Dublin. Whereas Ms. Dublin's death leaves this community with a deep feeling of sorrow for her loss of such honor and respect that she earned as a citizen of our community. Whereas Ms. Penny Dublin served this community in various capacities, though she was instrumental in resurrecting the East Smithfield Improvement Organization. And whereas Ms. Irene Penny Dublin was an advocate for our community and her neighborhood. Ms. Dublin earned the respect, the admiration, and the high regard for all of those who do work, and she came to contact with Mr. Stewart. She is, we are deeply sorrowed for this loss that we have experienced. Now therefore, I, Daniel Evans Jr., the Mayor of the Towne Smithfield, along with the members of this council, extend our sincere sympathies and appreciation for Ms. Irene Penny Dublin. Great work, Stewart. In addition to these proclamations in memory of, we have one of our officers who has achieved some additional rights. We'd ask Mr. Obranovich and Chief, if I will come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the very fine pleasure of announcing this evening the promotion of Officer Obranovich to Sergeant, charge of D-Team Operations in the Patrol Division, Smithfield Police Department. Sergeant Obranovich has worked as a patrol officer. He worked in extended stay at the Housing Department, and he's been a general investigator for quite some time prior to his promotion. And I can tell you, in my almost four years as a police chief here, he has been an outstanding representative of the city of Smithfield, Smithfield Police Department, and Johnston County as a whole. My very great pleasure to announce that this evening. I'd ask the mayor to come up and present his badge, and also Obranovich here to say a little bit for the code of ethics.
Oh, you're sorry. But you will get such naming with the badge. Ryan, if you will, repeat this code of ethics after me, and I'll keep the short suit recited. I recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it.
And I accept it.
As a public trust to be held.
As a public trust to be held.
So long as I am true.
So long as I am true.
To the ethics of the police service.
To the ethics of the police service.
I will constantly strive.
I will constantly strive.
To achieve these objectives.
To achieve these objectives.
And ideas.
And ideas.
Dedicating myself.
Dedicating myself.
Before God.
Before God.
To my chosen career.
To my chosen career.
In longboard.
In longboard.
Congratulations. Little wife, I answered you. He and you start the bathroom. She sticks with her phone. I want to know, are the ladies at the Housing Authority still baking you cakes? Thank you, guys. Great work. That's always the fun part of my job in the beginning, to get to recognize dedicated employees in service, and we thank you guys for being a part of that. That being in mind, public hearings, I don't see any Mr. Manager on the agenda for the night. We're at the section of public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to be heard, feel free to come forward. If you will state your name and address for the clerk, we'd appreciate it.
I'm Pam Miller. My address is 6221. How are you doing?
Okay. Afrika, tell us whatever's on your mind.
I'm here tonight on behalf of Edgerton Memorial United Methodist Church. The youth group is wanting to raise money so that they can go to, it's actually a camp and mission trip to western North Carolina. And of course, it will be expensive for these young people, and a lot of them would not be able to afford it without some type of fundraiser. And I'm here to ask the board if they would approve of the Edgerton youth having a pumpkin fundraiser, it'll be a pumpkin patch, at the property located at 724 North Brightleaf Boulevard. That's the old Trot Motel. And we have contacted Mohammed, and he just said it would be perfectly all right with him. And also Mark Lane, who will be there at the time that we're going to be there, which is the October 3rd through October 1st. And we need approval from the board to be able to do this fundraiser. And of course, this camp, the youth will be performing a variety of home repairs. It's not just a camp to fund. It's actually spiritual work for them as well, and giving them the opportunity to learn to lead and care for others. And they'll be doing a variety of home repairs for the unemployed, the disabled, the elderly, single parents, and of course, have an amazing opportunity to be able to share that stuff.
Okay. And Ms. Emmer just didn't make the deadline through proper channels, is that correct?
That is correct. As I was explaining to you, Mrs. Miller, that they have to contract to have the pumpkins grown, so they have to place their order, even though the event's coming up in October, they have to be able to confirm that they actually have a place to sell the pumpkins. So that's the reason she came to you the other day, the event, and all the big questions that the agenda and all the big questions I was at that time.
And for the boards, remember so that generally, we don't do a vote on comments. We can give just a nod if we feel that this is okay, or we order this product.
Would that be okay?
Well, I can't imagine why it wouldn't, but under normal conditions, we could go through the proper channels of application if it matters. Whatever the legal is, we'll. We got my vote.
Mayor, is there a conflict with the proposed farmers market at site?
The market will be closed in the end of August. This will be October, so they will not be there in the fall.
Do you want to feel any difference about the vote? I think you have a consent, proceed with the vote.
Thank you so very much. We really appreciate it.
All right, anybody else under citizens, comments? Address for the clerk, please.
My name's Angela Bydon, and I live in 4074, in Smithfield, North Carolina, Town Council. I live in the primary subdivision, and that subdivision is that we're going to be across from the cottage. And you know, that is a very busy intersection there, and it is a intersection where someone has already lost a life. Because there is a wreath that sits over on the left-hand side of the road, and I have never seen in front of any subdivision ever in my life, a wreath that just sits. There are times that I can tell that the family must go and refresh the flowers. But I got to thinking about something. Because that is a very busy intersection, why not, in order to remove the eyesore, because right now, the flowers that are on and we are very dirty looking and old and whatnot. And it just takes away from the beautification of our area. And I was wondering, why couldn't we make that spot where we consider a memorial of some sort? And then put a sign that's kind of large, that all of the students and the traffic can see that intersection that says, "Please drive carefully." And I just thought something like that would help to add to the beautification of the subdivision and across the street and college. And that was just my comment, thoughts and concerns.
Okay. Thank you. We will take that under advisement. We appreciate your comments.
And.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Anyone else wish to be heard, or citizens' comments? Okay. I'll move down the agenda. Do I have a vote on the consent agenda?
Motion is a second.
Motion is second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. As you said, Madam clerk. Moving through the agenda to the business items, the first one for consideration is to approve the lease agreement on 724 North Brightleaf Boulevard, the move of the Smithfield Farmers Market to be held there, and the approval to extend the budgetary funds, property improvements, and general needs of the market. Mr. Johnson, I recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You all know, we've been discussing for quite some time about the move of the Farmers Market to 724 North Brightleaf Boulevard, right across from the IGA. And I prepared an estimate of the cost that it would take to approve that property for us to be able to move there for the Farmers Market. Worked out an agreement with Mr. Mark Lane, who is there, as noted earlier, through the spring and part of the summer, and then in the fall. And he would accept some of those costs, or help with some of those costs, since he's going to get benefit. He does have his own agreement with the property owner, Mr. Mohammed, so he will be under his auspices and not the Farmers Market. So he'll take, his agreement with Mr. Mohammed will take precedence. But he has agreed to help with some of the costs and some of the, not only the ongoing costs, such as the accessible portable restroom, but also some of the site improvements, the screening for the trash can and for the restroom. And so the, coming before you tonight, Councilman Moore, I think, asked at the last meeting to bring back some proposed costs to see what would come into getting that property ready to house the Farmers Market. And well, all of it can basically be done by Parks and Rec staff, and many staffs agreed to help with a couple of things on that property, clean it up and get it ready for the market. And then you can see the estimated cost to get things going on the property. And I think you have a lease that Mr. Spence prepared, allows us to get out, or the property owner, I think within a hundred days, if he were to sell the property, or we were able to get out. I think it's a five-year lease, starting out. So I'll try to answer any questions, or have Mr. Spence answer any of the pleas.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson? I saw a couple of comments online about whether or not this would affect any of those local businesses, particularly that IGA. And did we contact them and have conversation with any of the neighbors around there about what we're doing over there?
I haven't. I haven't talked to.
No one's talked to anybody in the IGA, or, I don't know how big an issue, but maybe wonder if we should have had some conversation with some of the people along that area there.
Tim, is this a self-funding? I realize, I see what you've written here, but this ain't going to cost the town any money. All expenses are going to be paid out of revenues received. Is that correct?
Right.
Yes. Also, we have a budget of $5,000 in the present year budget for the Farmers Market. So it looks like it'll be less than that, and as presented, it will be more or less a wash with expected revenues. Any product problems in the Farmer's Market? It's a count of visits, two, two budget years, starts in April, and it seems to have some certain proceeds that come in July, or just.
And the last, and I mean, let me, I'll make sure that I answer that as correctly as I can. It has in the, in the past, it's pretty much probably been less than $1,000, and I'm saying it because I don't know exactly, but if there's been any, any cost more than what's been taken in, it's been, I know it's been less than $1,000. So, and I can't, you know, I can't, I'm not going to guarantee that, you know, that either out here or there, it will have a certain number of vendors, because that, you know, it's.
I understand, but on our projections, we think.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Really is there some gain.
Right, I really think that out there, it will do even better here, and that's the reason for moving it. And we upped the fees, you know, so we would, you know, try to make sure that we were covering the costs. I mean, that, you know, obviously, that's, we're looking at budget costs, we make sure that it is settled for.
When, I don't mean to backtrack, but when the committee was looking at moving, did you look at any other locations besides this one? Did you look at perhaps a location in West Smithfield? Or did you pretty much have your sights on this location?
A couple of different ones. I mean, I think that was the primary site, was kind of the priority. But another one that was discussed was over by the Little League, the youth baseball field. And I think that'd probably be a good location. The worry there was all the traffic and people getting in and out. I mean, I guess it'd be no different at Wrightleaf Place or the Lee Market, but there was some concern there with getting in and out. But, you know, definitely could be an option also.
Any more questions? How, how will we staff?
Mainly through one of our employees. Last year, the senior citizens volunteered some time out there, and we used a little bit of our, a little bit of Parks and Recreation part-time to fill in. But there were three of us that did the majority of that. I was out there some, and senior citizens were out there some, and then the full-time employee that was overseeing it was out there the majority of the time.
Is that a, how does that affect the city as far as cost for those employees that will be staffing there? We going to pay them overtime? We going?
No, 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 sorry. If any, any overtime that we have is part-time, we overtime pay. So no, we're full-time employees.
Any other questions, Tom, say.
Question on the lease, best appropriate now. It's maybe more directly, Bob, I read paragraph U, you prepared it for both parties. I guess both parties are going to split your bill 50-50. And number two, if a problem ever arose, I guess you would be conflicted out of either party?
I'm conflicted out of either party. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of exposed to that, so.
I appreciate you.
I have represented, and the decisions that I'm issued. Whenever that comes up, I'm, 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 I'm surprised.
What is your, what were you talking about?
Anybody mention that I had represented?
He represented both parties. And he drafted and requested both parties.
Well, I wrote, I drafted and requested the town, and I disclosed.
The Farmers Market, my God.
The Farmers.
They like to do them, just by step, yeah, for like.
Well, you never know.
I guess that's the way a lot of them.
This is, this is.
Back in line, this is on the market.
This is intended as a fairly notable lease, it might be out of three months notice, as you can imagine. But you could put very much there, it was.
I understand.
It's probably a good idea.
Any other questions?
I just had one, I think, last meeting I had requested some, some cost, and possibly, my biggest thing was improvements and what would happen, particularly the landscaping. What type of landscaping will be required at this site? That might be more of a Paul question, I think, sort of, I think I kind of requested at last meeting, an update on what would be required, and we have an update on that?
Yeah, the, well, the requirement was, the landscape, I worked for the landscape materials right at $600. It was about, it was a little over 100 plants, and probably shrubs, and then about eight, six or eight small trees, like freight myrtles. So that was going to be right around $600. Of course, if you do that, then we have mulching, and so my, you know, my, my estimate there was probably $800 to $1,000 for the landscape. And, you know, that, I can, I understand where that could be, you don't know we're going to be there, that's just, I guess, a decision, how to go forward with that part of it.
I guess, just my question is, is that, why is it required now, and is not required by, was not required by, I guess, Mr. Lane at the time that he does his seasonal sales there? That's another question, I guess, for Paul.
In, in the permitting, the council gave permission from Mr. Lane to put that there, and that wasn't one of the stipulations of the condition, so we did not require it at that time. Make with now, with the landscape ordinance being fulfilled, and a lot of other issues, we are requiring landscaping on all the tall projects to come within close proximity to what the demand's. And I can tell the rise of the landscape is, is part of the overall project. The, one thing I mentioned to Tim that we can do, and the landscape itself has actually we water them actively and mulch and keep the water around and that's one alternative. The, the other alternative, I, it's concerning, the other thing is that generally in the spring, we get a lot of landscape nurseries that are doing the donate plants. Last two or three years, we've had Sweet Creek Nursery and other nurseries call the town and offer donation of plants. And I hope that more than likely, the same thing will happen again this spring. So we may well, in fact, get plants donated.
I guess my biggest thing is, is if it's required and we're doing it by all means, we should follow the code. But I guess my real question is, is it really required to do this much landscaping? Because the code was in place when Mr. Lane rented that lot. So I'm not exact, quite exactly sure why, what the difference is between what we're trying to do as a seasonal business, this is a seasonal business. I, I just don't understand why it was being required now and not then. And is it truly required to put in this much landscaping when we don't have, we're gonna be there for? That's my whole, that's my question.
Well, by code, it is required to put, put landscaping in. By virtue of the town being the sponsor of the farmer's market, I think we proved it that the town landscages the street garden. And plus the fact that it also provides a safety factor, even though it's a minimal barrier between the traffic and the activities going on in the farmer's market, it would be a good safety factor to have some landscape in there to separate the winter's area from the, from the.
Mr. Emmerich, what's the safety factor involved with landscaping?
The landscaping is placed 15 feet behind the roadway line, and that's for sheer purpose of separating activities happening from the property, from the traffic in the street. And that's, in all, in all of the landscaped zones in town, the first 15 feet of the property is the landscape area where the plant materials.
Okay, my next question, would it be acceptable, since this is a temporary site and a seasonal site, that we landscape the signage in the road front area only?
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Would it be acceptable if we, instead of landscaping this whole site with this cost, could we only landscape the signage, the area in the front by the road versus the whole area?
By virtue of this being issued as conditional use permitted by the town, you have the right to require a part of any landscaping that you might so desire, so counsel.
I had one, though, without. It's been so long. All right, you heard the request, do I have a motion on the request?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all those who favor I.
Question.
Sir?
There was some discussion.
There was some discussion.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we only landscape the road front area on conditional use for the farmer's market?
At this point, we have a motion to second, so we'll have to proceed with a motion in second without condition. I would do that, probably where it's.
That's our.
Any conditions?
We do have a condition. We do have a.
Mr. Johnson, so there is a plan presented as part of the conditional use of shared landscaping in the street garden.
Yes. That's, that's what you're supposed to do, because it's supposed to be a formal finding of fact and moral expression. You just think you should do that. So that's a little bit.
The findings of fact were unanimously approved in the last meeting.
Any more to go? We have a motion in a second. All those who favor I.
Aye.
Second item for discussion, approval and acceptance of the strategic plan. Mr. Manager, I recognize you ahead of.
Thank you, ma'am. Any back to you, Paul? I have the summary of the law, this is retrieved at the end of the day, and as you can see, Mr. Ray, I can summarize this for you. If something has any change or additions or slight adjustments to it, that's more than acceptable. And this is really just a summary of what's covered. It's got the timelines and on the report, and I just have back to the council on these various projects. And really just looking for a motion to approve that, so that you have this as a, as a written document. And if there are any changes, if there are any变更s or if that is.
Gentlemen, you see the request, this is the strategic plan that we went through and developed ourselves. Will there be any changes before we have a motion on it? I think this is just a frame, one of them to move forward. Staff. Any changes, do I have a motion to be accepted?
I'll make a motion to accept the plan as written.
Motion out of second, those who favor I.
Aye.
Opposed. Manager, move forward with your strategic plan. Item three, motion to authorize the town attorney to file a complaint for remediation by having the house on 1108 full of street polished and the property cleaned up and landscaped. Gentlemen, I recognize you.
This, this particular property, we see, received a citizen's complaint several months back. We did the investigation into the complaint and found it to be a valid complaint. We subsequently undertook code enforcement activities on it, providing the property owner with adequate notice. Have gone through, is you have a summary in your report of all activities that have been undertaken. I'll not go through all that again unless you have specific questions. But we're now at the point that we would like to ask the council to authorize the town attorney to file a complaint to the court system for remediation of the problems at the residence.
Okay, you heard the request by staff and supported by the manager, put it on the docket, but those, any discussion in the comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a move, make a motion that we are trying to go to the attorney, that's cool.
Okay, motion in a second to proceed, all those who favor I.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, thank Mr. Emmerich. Item four, consideration of RFQ for primary and/or ancillary health insurance coverage for downpour. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, ma'am. As I've set forth in the summary memorandum, really two, two areas under consideration here. One is for our town paid, or what I've generally referred to as our primary benefits, benefiting the full-time employees, which I've summarized there, it's on page 49 of your packet. That's our primary health insurance for full-time employees and the qualifying retired employees. That's a portion of the spouse, family, or dependent health insurance, dental insurance, certain levels of life insurance, typically $20,000 per employee, and long-term disability for department heads only. Those are the basic primary benefits that the town does supply to employees in varying degrees. Another group to be considered separately, or what I've referred to as the ancillary or voluntary benefits, those are employee-paid. And you see the summary there, that's also the remaining portion of the primary health insurance for spouse or family or dependent care. Secondary health insurance, I give the example of that, that's for backup medical, if you want that in addition to your primary medical. Additional life insurance for employee, that'd be where an employee wants to buy more than $20,000 for his life coverage, or if he wants to buy health, or I'm sorry, life insurance for a spouse or child. Vision insurance, certain short-term disability and certain long-term disability. Again, all of those costs are paid by the employee. And typically, the town does deduct that from payroll and pay that amount for the, for the, for the benefit of the employee, again, paid out of the employee's earnings. The question before the council tonight is, one, we do have our town-paid primary benefits, that's handled through JRW, the insurance brokerage firm, who's handled it for some time now. And the second group, the employee-paid, is handled by varying groups. What I'd like to do going forward to next year is, one, I'd like to, my recommendation is to roll over the contract for at least one more year with JRW to handle the time-paid primary benefits. They've done a good job, I think they say just a significant amount of money. They're well-positioned to handle any of the primary health insurers in North Carolina. That is, they can bring us a bid and a quote from all of the primary health insurance carriers, which many brokerage firms are unable to do. And I think that's an important aspect as we consider our health coverage for our employees. And also, that's a key fact in able to, to net savings going forward this next year. So the question there is, we are able and we can put together an RFQ, that's a request for qualifications, as opposed to a proposal, which is actual bids from a, bids from an insurance carrier. But we can go through the process of, of looking at different insurance brokers to handle that for us, looking only at their qualifications, not really their proposed rate, fee, fee structure, or their, the, or the actual quote from an insurance carrier. The idea would be, you would select an insurance broker who would then, based on qualifications alone, they would go out, shop the health insurance and find the best deal as JRW did last year. The second area, my, my recommendation is that we do perform an RFQ or even kind of a blended RFQ-RFP to allow a third party to handle the administration of those employee-paid ancillary benefits. We've been doing those in-house by and large. I think the staff time and administration is, is quite an ordeal, I think, and it will be no cost to the town. We can hire a third-party firm to handle that for us, either directly or indirectly, meaning that we may still be able to provide payroll deductions that would benefit the employee. But the third-party group who would handle those ancillary benefits would send us a monthly bill, they would administer, make sure the deductions are appropriate, and make sure the payments are made appropriately. We're doing that in-house now, and it is quite a consumption of time and effort. I think we could get more bang for our buck, or the employees' buck, I'm sure to be told, they will be paying for that. I think it'd be better to administer that way. We have so many payroll deductions and many more than most local governments do, I think we need to shift that to a third party and let them handle that, so that we can focus on our primary health benefits. So mayor, in summary, two issues before the council tonight. First is the town-paid primary benefits, a decision whether the council wants to go with an RFQ or if they want to roll over the contract with JRW under the same charge right now, which presently is at a $15 per employee rate, which has been charged this past year, which was a good rate. And also, you know, my recommendation in that area is basically based on the rate, but also based on the fact that JRW, they've done a good job, they do have the wherewithal with our changing healthcare environment now, going forward with the Affordable Healthcare Act. There's a lot of moving parts in healthcare these days, and it will be for the next 18 months. I feel they can handle that, that advisory role very well for the town. And also, I, I know they have a lot of experience, which I'd like to look very hard at this year, at a self-insured possibility for the town to consider for its employees, and they could use at least one or two different carriers, but step toward that self-insured role, which as we did last year, we had significant savings from the year before in terms of our, our healthcare costs. And again, this could just be for the, the coverage of the employee. They can move that to the self-insured, and there might be an opportunity to have another significant savings even going forward this year, and so maintain our full coverage for our employees. Certainly, this is no committal to how much, what your coverage is gonna be, what you're gonna provide for the employee. This is really just who's gonna handle that for the town. That's what tonight's about. My recommendation is to stay with JRW for the primary. Certainly, we can do the RFQ, so I don't want you to think that's not possible. Certainly, I feel comfortable with them going forward, but I would be comfortable in providing a, a request for proposals or qualifications on the second category of benefits, which is the, the employee-paid or ancillary benefits. That would open up to the market, and love when otherwise, give everybody a chance to weigh in there and, and get some business out here. Mayor, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to address those. I would like to get some direction, if possible.
Paul, what's the timing of this? As far as the contract?
Well, the renewals aren't until the end of the fiscal year, so June 30th. And we, we have time on both of them, you know, we're getting close to that, so if we're gonna, we're gonna, either way we go, we need to get moving pretty quick on it. But we can, we can have an RFQ and get it back on the employee-paid without, without too much trouble. On the town-paid, you know, health benefits, we can do that also, it'd be a little bit more pushing up against the deadline, but we can do it. We started later last year, actually a month and a half later, and we were able to do it, just more of a rush. I would like to have some more time on the town-paid primary health benefits, really take a really hard look at that self-insured option, which I think, again, may, may actually add some good savings this year going forward, and still be able to provide our full-time employees with, with, you know, a good first primary healthcare coverage.
I certainly, I mean, I certainly understand what your concerns are and your points as far as staying with JRW, especially with the uncertain times that we have right now in the insurance industry. But on the flip side of it, I also would like to see us put it out for bid and see what we can come up with, because we might get a better price than this $15 per person. We don't know unless we put it out there.
Well, you gotta keep in mind, the, the price, the price, I mean, with an RFQ, you're really looking at qualifications, not a proposal for actual price. Because whether it's 15 or 25 or $5, if you're paying, if you're paying $800,000 and you're paying somebody only $8 an employee, but you're paying somebody else, you know, $20 an employee, which you're only paying $600,000 for that policy, then that's pretty clear that you can pay more per person, but the area that you get, you know, where your savings are. So I mean, I just, I just wanna make sure you understand that. This would be based on, can you provide us with, you know, good service? You're basically based qualifications.
Sure.
Whereas the actual, you know, rate typically, that will only come up once you've chosen a firm and then you negotiate that, that number.
But why, why couldn't we just put it out for bid and based off the qualifications and the price? I mean, this is a firm that until we went into arbitration, we were paying substantially a higher rate. And it wasn't until we went to arbitration that we got down to the $15 per employee. So why can't we just put it out for bid and base it off of the qualifications?
We can. Put it out for bid. In fact, I, you know, I think we have to put it out for bid. I think the citizens deserve it, and I think they've mandated it. We try to make sure we're getting the best service and the best deal that we can. I think it would be prudent on council's part to put it out for bid. As far as the section two about whether to allow staff to advertise an appropriate RFQ and solicit qualification from appropriate entities to handle the ancillary portion of this, I think that's prudent. But I, I assume, Paul, you know, there's some history there with JRW. You know, this is a firm that was, you say they were sticking it to us, got into litigation with them, and this is what we ended up with. I do know that the former acting town manager had a group here who he had worked with in his former town, correct me if I'm wrong, mayor, and they offered to do it for $2. And we ended up staying with JRW for, for legal reasons, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I just think that it's, it's prudent on our part to, the town of Smithfield to put this out for bid. We may end up with JRW, but I, I could not vote to just give it to JRW. My opinion.
I agree.
And, and maybe we need to know towns with the same capacity that we have, similar to the capacity we have, who are they using, how they use, make some comparison, insurance companies, so that even though if we go wrong, we'll feel like we are out there in the same game, not in a different game.
I agree.
And maybe we need to know towns with the same capacity that we have, similar to the capacity we have, who are they using, how they use, make some comparison, insurance companies, so that even though if we go wrong, we'll feel like we are out there in the same game, not in a different game, in the same individual.
I just, if we put it out for bid, I want to make sure that we're comparing apples and apples and not apples and oranges. We need to know what services we're going to get. And I think what we found out was that $2 a person wasn't near the first, they can get it for $15 a person. So we need to, we need to.
We didn't find that out. I never heard of that. We ended up not going with anybody else, but due to the legal issue.
It was disgusting, the legal issue. I don't know how much we can talk more about that.
Yeah, that was, you know.
Well, cheaper's not always, you're right. I mean, cheaper is not always.
And I'm not advocating we go with the cheapest one. I'm just saying we need to put this out for bid.
And I agree.
Our manager needs to craft what we're looking at. He needs to do that and then bring it to us. So if he were to, we all can bear it.
And I think we can. So we do it, and then too, we need to do it in one bid for both of these services, or can we split it out like you already have in all, in two different ones? I mean, that's, you know, we go even way. Yeah, I think it's two different things. I mean, one firm can bid on both if they want to, but I think, yeah, because it's two different, it's really two different services. It really is. I guess the direction I'm going to need, though, is if there's an inclination to get a price, it's a little bit different than just a qualification. I mean, I think it can be crafted, but, I mean, with that direction, I mean, I want to make sure we're clear. I would like to put together an RFQ and go ahead and advertise it, basically, get it out, so the next time we meet, I can bring it back to you. If that's all right. I don't, I mean, we could, we could spend a long time talking about what's going to be in there. My intent would be to get qualifications based on, you know, what their experience is in other towns. If you want to have them weigh in on their, on their charges, on their rates, I think that's okay. I mean, if it's going to be an employee, per-employee cost or something like that, you know, we can do that. But I think, again, you've got to be careful, you know, with how you weigh that, basically, in terms of, you know, what you're looking at. Part of my RFQ will be to, because I can't have firms or firms come to me, you say they're going to charge $3 a rate, but they can only represent two years in their life. That's, I think I mentioned to somebody I was talking to earlier about, that's like going to a car shop, and you want to look at all the cars in the mid-size range, and they say, "Well, that's fine, but I only sell Fords or Chevrolets, and I don't sell Hondas or Toyotas, and so I can't show you those." But Hondas and Toyotas are bad, and they steer before the one or two cars they do actually sell. I mean, there's four or five, I believe, actually legitimate mainstay carriers of health insurance in North Carolina. I feel like we need to get a bid proposal from all of those. If we choose, one of them doesn't work or doesn't fit, that's our choice. But what I think we may run into is that not all brokers can do that. They can't bring us all five. And then they're going to come back and say, "Well, I don't bring you those, I don't think they do a good job," or whatever, and they're going to try to get in, which is, "Hey, my rate's so low, but I can only bring you three." And I've heard that over and over again, and I think that's what we'll face. I just wanted the direction to be clear with the board, at least their expectations. I mean, my RFQ would be, name those four or five healthcare, show me your license, your agency, who you can represent, and bring me proposals from them, and then also ask them for, you know, a price, you know, per employee, so we get the full picture of the capability of those firms. If that's, if that meets your expectations.
Yeah, we just, we just want you to shop it around. We just want you to make sure that.
Yeah, we need to show that we've made the effort to get the very best firm at the lowest price.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair enough. I can do that, and I'll get that out as soon as I can. And a might bid to bring it back at one of our budget meetings leading up to our April meeting, which might save us a week or two. I think we've got two in late March, so I'll shoot for that. And that's fine. I know, I think they'll probably have to make a motion, but understanding will be that I'll do the kind of blended RFQRFP with regard to the rate on the primary benefits, and then more of an RFP for the ancillary benefits.
Can that be done in one motion?
That'd be fine.
I'm voting that we conduct an RFQ for the administration of the town-paid health benefits and the employee-paid health benefits.
Second. Motion, that's second, all those, is that right?
Aye.
Close. Okay. All right, moving to the mayor's report. You'll see in your packet, I will not read these proclamations, but we wanted to participate with the Week of the Young Child, as we have for several years now. This came through our request from Christina Patterson of Peterson, from Partnerships of Children, so you'll see the proclamation supporting that between the month of April the 14th and 20th, the Week of the Young Child. Also, we have made a proclamation for the Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week, which a request came from the National MS Society, the Greater Carolinas Chapter. This is something that came through the governor's office and one of the boards, a local entity. Ms. Kara Mosley made that request of my office, and we declared that March the 11th through the 17th. Also, a couple other just brief announcements. Town Hall Day, work has to get some reservations for that, if you want to go to that. I think reservations are needed by the 14th. The date is of the 27th, I believe, my work. So please get with the work if you wish to go to that. March the 12th, we have a grand opening of the congressman's office here in Town Hall. I think we're actually going to do the ribbon cutting in here, because the main office is a little bit crowded, if you want to come in for that, being March the 12th. Can't know what time, 10:00 in the morning?
10:00.
10:00 that morning, so if you want to come by for that. Also, we have a special event of the naming of a portion of the highway in honor of Mr. Dick Fleming. That's on March the 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. at Johnston Community College in the lobby, as the invitation wrote. So please, reserve time for that, it's a very special time, and we recognize Mr. Fleming and the family for that. Also, in conversation regarding of the bridge project, it is on track. We may be a little bit ahead, so we'll all be happy when the bridge is opened up. And I saw a new sandblasting out there today, so it's kind of cloudy out there just on the bridge, but calm down when it got the rain. But anyway, we're ahead of track, so that's going to be really good and really nice, and get it all beautified out there. Bobby will get it finished up. Let me see.
Where was Sarah from, Mayor of Levee from Dixon?
There.
Where was?
At the Great Hall?
Auditorium, yes.
At the Great Hall. Trying to think of anything. We picked it up in your report, but I think we're putting together some budget figures. I will tell you this, the mayors of most, several communities have been working together of how we can work collaboratively and do some purchasing for all of our communities at bulk rate purchasing, and work with the manager and TM and some of the elements of the staff, and. Who are you working with? Different towns, we're working with Wilson's Mills, Stelmo, Benson, I'm Level in micro, I think you're actually in that group, but mostly Stelmo and myself, and Benson right now, and Clayton, we've been working together. We found some economies of scale. I think we'll be able to do some things at bulk rate that we can order, but we can all save some money together. So there's a lot of efforts. In fact, we've got a meeting this coming week with the mayors in Princeton. All the mayors are going there, so just want to let you know that that effort is underway. I think that's all I've got. I don't know your report. Oh, well, the council comments first, excuse me.
Yeah, we still, we're still having those trucks parked out there in the old cement area, and what is, you know, one of the alarming things about it, some of them disconnecting the trailers over time, and that can be really, it's not a truck.
I saw them out there one day, I said.
Need to work on that.
All you've got to be a violation of storage.
Mr. Heffner, he's given us permission to post the property, no trespassing, which will allow the police department, which is supposed to enforce trespassing on property. Ms. Moore, I think you have a copy of the document, maybe this time?
Yeah, I just, if it would run something past the council, I was looking at the expense reports and where we are to date, and as we're drawing near to the end of the budget cycle, and we've got about three, four more months here, I was just wondering if we could schedule a meeting, I was thinking on the 21st of March, to sit down with Paul and just review over where we are on the budget, and get his take on, on some of the revenues that are coming in. I was noticing sales tax, other taxes are, seem to be kind of low at this time, and just kind of get your feel, Paul, of what your thoughts are on where they're going to come in and so forth, if that's okay. I was, I just, I was just thinking maybe March the 21st, 6:00?
We could either do that, or we could add it, you know, to the, I'm mistaken, our first workshop is the 20th. We could add it to that, and then if that pushes one of the departments to the next workshop, we could do that, and, you know, I think that's, I'm not saying that's a Wednesday.
The 20th?
20th, I think, March 20th.
Of March?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that, that might, depending on how thick it might take, we might be able to do that, do that first, and then move into the budget.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't realize we had one on the 20th, so yeah, that's fine. I just, if you could just be prepared to kind of give an update, and I've got, I can get with you to kind of.
On that subject, could you possibly get the city clerk to send us an email with a refresher on the dates for the schedule?
Well, I'll send you the budget schedule, Scott. Is that it?
I want to mention something that I, I think you all know, I've sent you an email about the parking situation in downtown Smithfield, and this is not a subject we haven't approached before, but I had recently had a citizen of the town complain to me about the abuse of people going over the two-hour limitation and parking in downtown Smithfield. I know that we had gone down that road when I first got on the council. My memory was that, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but at one time, the downtown development group paid for, hired someone to do for a 30-day period or something like that, I can't remember, is that correct?
We paid for the first six months with the hope that the money that we generated would show that the person would then pay, be able to pay for themselves the tickets that were generated. So we basically fronted the money for six months, weren't in trouble, for the revenue that was made, going back to the DSEC, or to continue the enforcement of that. And I think it paid for itself, but I think it was, you know, it was, my understanding, the gentleman was, it's been several years, that it was somebody that we just paid part-time, who was not an officially sworn officer, it was just kind of someone, a retired individual that was going through for about four, five hours a day. But it's something that, you know, our organization, obviously, I've heard the same complaints as you, a lot of the offenders are actually merchants downtown, and as well as the folks around the courthouse, the sheriff's department, and other law enforcement officers. So I have no problem, but our organization's always stood behind the enforcement of that, reminding our merchants of the need of having home street parking.
Well, my point is that I think that we need to look at a proper way to deal with that situation. We have signs down there that says, "To our limit." You know, if I were you, Mr. Mayor, and have a business in the downtown area, I would feel that it would be very difficult for a client to come park and visit me when there's not a lot of parking, and it's a touchy subject probably to a certain degree, because I think you're right, Chris, I see a lot of what appear to be official vehicles there, or government vehicles that are parking on the street and staying there over their limit. Couldn't swear to it, but I think we need to be sensitive to the county. There are other places to park in Smithfield besides right there, and I would ask that someone try to figure out what it is we can do down there to address this properly. We need to, you know, I don't want to make anybody mad, like the county or somebody like that, but the reality of it is, is I believe it's hurting people like you and their businesses in downtown Smithfield, and you're right, some of the people who own those businesses are parking right there in the front all the time. And you know that as well as I do, because we've talked about it, but I would like to us to address that.
Mayor, is that something you think we can work with, or gee?
Yes, sir, and I, I think, I think at the end of the day, we can come back, bring back, I think, talking to Chief Scott already, you know, two of the options are going to be really either just a better way to collect fines, enforce those, or towing. I think Chief Scott's had some experience on jurisdictions where after a certain amount of warnings, if it came up again in violation, car got towed. And there wasn't, with that regard to whether it was a private car, a sheriff's car, a judge's car, they were towed. And so it's hard, it's hard to walk them into ground there, but like you said, it's probably, I mean, obviously, we could warn the, you know, the courthouse and personnel to kind of be ready, you know, to abide by that, but at the end of the day, I think it's going to be, it's going to be, it's hard to, there's no gray area. It's either black or it's white, and you either tow it or you're not, and there's not much middle ground there. So if they're, like, if the county, a lot of court personnel does park there, if they have other places to go, you know, that maybe involve a walk, they might be encouraged to go there. It seems like my history that was told me a week or two ago when this came up, was that there was a movement going back a couple of years, and it created some problems with the courthouse personnel then, and then the town just kind of stopped enforcing some of the, some of those, and that's where it has licensed that time. So, you know, it's one of those things, I mean, I think, you know, it's not difficult to enforce in some respects. We're going to have to change the ordinance to give us, I think, a better remedy at the end of the day, probably towing, but then we're going to have to enforce it, and that's where the, some of the people might get rubbed the wrong way.
Well, you know, I think part of it is, it's not enforced, so people know it's not enforced, so they just park. They know they're going to get in trouble. I would feel certain that if we did a friendly enforcement, that the official vehicles would get the message, and it wouldn't park there more than two hours, and if they did, and if they got towed, I would imagine their bosses would say, "Well, why did you park there?" But I just think we need to address it, we need to do it in a friendly way, and at some point, we need to enforce it.
Well, I'd just like to publicly say, there's plenty of parking downtown. It may not be right in front of each business that you're speaking of, but there's plenty of home street parking, so just want to make sure the public and the press are aware that, you know, Baptist Church has always been very generous in their parking lots. They publicly said, if anybody can park there during the day, there's plenty of parking on Bridge Street. It may not be right in front of the building, but it's at least a half a block away. The unfortunate thing is, is that if you can't see the front door, you might as well be on the other side of the world. But there's plenty of parking, and there's lots here at the Town Hall, lots next to the fires and parking, there's plenty of parking spaces on Front Street where my office is. But unfortunately, people just, they've got, they feel like they've got to have it right there in front of their place.
Paul, a question for you and Bob. When Councilman Harris mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, my question was, I know in the past, we have had difficulty as far as collection of the fines and the parking tickets. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, Bob? I think you're the one who, I think, kind of told us it was kind of difficult to enforce the way our current ordinance is written. Is that correct?
Yes, it has to do with how you're charging, what you're paying, the schools, and what you're going to have, you're going to go through your ordinances and, I don't like any other, any other, we could have it so that it was better enforced, I'm not sure that's the real issue there, the major issue maybe that you would have to give out tickets to a lot of people who probably would respect the tickets, but would not have that.
Right.
So that's happened in the past. I know I got called up once to court, I was to judges, I was, I was available to get a street. One of the court members got there.
Right.
How much, how much, how much would it cost to put a parking unit down there, be on the street where you have a, a, make them so that they were only a whole hour worth of parking, so people would know that when they did, when they did. Hey, you know, you go places and you, that still have parking meters and you better keep it filled up. At least they'd have to come out there and pay for over.
But if you don't enforce it, and write on the ticket to start with, you, you put money in the meter?
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. If you don't have any other way to enforce it, then whenever you find that there's overstayed the time, you can write them a meter for filling. That's what you do in, in most cities.
There's companies that will provide metering, you know, at no charge, but you're basically they're taking their, paying their installation meter out of the collection of the, you know, the cost. You can pay in microcoins, dollar bills, credit cards, and they charge you for their installation. I think the issue there though, before you, down that road is, is really, is that going to discourage downtown shopping if you near the higher downtown area? And you wouldn't have to do that, you can, you could meter only certain areas that were more of a problem, areas in town, not trying to stay away from the merchant area, you just have to go that, that route. I think, I don't know when, y'all, I'm sure some of y'all remember, I think there were some meters in downtown that were a long time that were removed, don't know what politics were there. It's just, I think that's a, that's a, that's a topic, a conversation, whether you want to go down that road or not again. There would be some revenue that could be made, and again, it wouldn't be all or nothing. You couldn't meter certain areas and not others. Again, that's, it's, it's an issue.
And Paul, the other issue is, I've mentioned this before and I'd like to see something done about it and enforced, but it's, it's vehicles parking on the sidewalk. We spent a lot of money, or Downtown Development did, putting in those sidewalks and putting in the, the brick inlay there and having vehicles park up on the sidewalk is not good at all.
It's very damaging.
And as Chris mentioned, there's plenty of off-street parking, you know, they don't have to park right in front of the business. But I think we've actually done some studies in the past that show where pretty, pretty, pretty large-sized vehicles can still park in those spots and still have plenty of room. So they don't have to park on the sidewalk. And, you know, it's my feeling is, is we should enforce it downtown and we should continue to enforce it, but when we start back enforcing it, then this council better be ready. And this council better be ready to answer to those business owners who are the ones that are sitting out on the street all day long, parking in those spots as well, because they're going, just as they're complaining now, they're going to be the first ones to complain when their cars are towed. And, and staff, the police department and staff needs their back in this council.
We can always buy 25 booths and just go in there, put on the card, park them for two hours, they can't move the card, they give us $50. And we're not going to enforce it, let's take the signs down. You know, as far as parking on the curb, the reason people do that, and I'm not defending them, but if you go park in that parking space, whoever designed those parking spaces, you're going to lose your meter or car if you slide it in. I've lost two down there myself, and I don't go down there all that much. But I can tell you, that's why they do it. I'm not saying that they should do that. But if we want to address that, what we should do is take the bricks out and put a little more space in there, and I'm not advocating that either, but I'm saying there's a reason to do that. But my whole thing on this parking is, we're not going to enforce it, let's just take the signs down. I don't have a problem with that. That's what the council wants to do, but, you know, we've got signs up, we're not enforcing to give people something like that. So maybe we should just take the signs down, we'll decide what to do, and maybe it won't change anything.
Well, let us look at it, because I think we sent back, Chief's got sent back responses with some of the historical experiences, but we can bring back some maybe some more concrete choices next month and see, maybe there is a quicker solution that we can do in the interim.
And Councilmore, it's a tough, it's a tough call, what you do down there, but we're not forcing it now, so, you know, if you're, if you're trying to do this, it would be good to take the signs down.
I mean, I'm, I'm curious, I mean, I'm not sure where that complaining question came, but I mean, I, you know, I've never heard a complaint from a citizen about any parking problems downtown, one way or the other. And yet, I don't know, I talked to Chief Scott, and he said he didn't hear complaints from other, other people who are, whether it's merchants or otherwise. I don't know, Chris, if you can get any downtown, I mean, I just, I haven't heard it as a problem, frankly.
Well, I know, I know that one, in, one vehicle has been there for at least three weeks, it has not moved from bed.
Yeah, what I'm saying though is-
But an merchant pointed that out to you.
But I mean, I guess my question is, is this, is this really a problem when we're talking about one isolated case?
I think it's just case by case basis. I mean, and I don't think the, in spirit, what my organization might do is say we're unfriendly, you know, but I think a, a routine of going through, keeping everybody honest and usually the big few is merchants. And I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, I just generally tell individuals that if my wife and my mother-in-law can figure out a way of driving their car inside their buildings and parking next to the cash register, they do it. But the point is that, you know, they just get into habits, and we all get into habits of, of driving into business only saying, "Well, I want to be here for 15 minutes," and something happened inside and before you know it, you get a call inside doing other things, and you realize that you're there for three hours and you end up taking up that parking space. Our organization has long stood behind the police department in saying that, you know, something, monitoring needs to occur. Is that daily? I don't think so. Is that going to be once a week or just to keep people honest? Then that's probably the, in my opinion, the route that we should go. But like I said, when you've got individuals that are, that have been there for three weeks, that's, that's a little bit abusive of the privilege, in my opinion, so.
Why aren't we enforcing?
I think the answer is because we can't collect on the fines. We can write tickets all day long, but if I'm here in our turn-
They're always going to solve that problem if you can't collect that. It's that lobby isn't going to solve that problem. They're going to get it from the DMV.
Absolutely. That's, that's what I understand. I mean, it's that tickets can be written, but it's difficult, they're not possible, but it's difficult, maybe, I don't know, it's time issue or a legal collection issue, but I think in the past, when tickets have been written, then, then it'll be a very good line.
Well, I think it's something we need to look into, and we've got the directives there and back to us, just, you know, we'll, that's all.
Unless there's something else from the council, Mr. Heffner, you want to give us your report?
Mayor, just to follow up briefly on the Highway 70, a bridge replacement project. I think you got the detail about the activity. The contractor does feel good about finishing that project early. No specific date yet, but I do feel like they will finish the early part of April, which is, which is really good news for the project. They've done well. I know they're worried about the weather for the next week or so, that may slow them down a little bit, but I think they do, they do feel like they'll have that finished and open sometime in that timeframe. We're hoping to get a more definite date, maybe in the next two weeks, they're going to make an announcement about a specific time for that opening. But I also want to make the public aware that when it's open to traffic, which is the, the primary goal, obviously, the bridge won't be completely finished. I think there'll be some rail issues and some other finishes they have to do. There might be some temporary land closures after, after it opens for the actual traffic. But I don't, I mean, I think we'd rather have those, those minor inconveniences than just have the bridge closed for another, you know, month to get all that finished. So I think that's the approach that DOT is going to take, so I think that's a good one. So hopefully that bridge will be open as soon as possible. I want to let you know, I think some of the council have received their updated town code from the clerk. She has updated the code with ordinance revisions from the last several years, so we haven't gotten that check-in with our clerk, and she can get that for you. I think she either got your new code or she gave you the inserts for your code, so make sure you've got that, and make sure everybody's got the most up-to-date code as their reference tool. Mayor, we are continuing to work on the, the fee schedule, dealing with the internet, internet sweepstakes businesses. Again, we're going to try to get something back to the board before just the adoption of the budget, so it's in, in place well before the renewals that, that come due, usually in June and early July. So that is something, we're hoping to have something maybe as early as this next month to at least give you on the fee side. Probably will not have anything on the zoning side, the land use side of that, but just on the fee side, which is a little bit easier to, to handle as opposed to the full-blown zoning or land use sides for those establishments. I think we covered the budget. Mayor, as you know, we are working hard staff-wise on that first draft budget, getting ready for that March 20th meeting, which will be here at 6:15 p.m. on Wednesday, March 20th, will be our first workshop. Mayor, usually we would have had a Smithfield Crossings meeting today, because of some schedule conflicts, we were not able to have that meeting. I gave you in my report what was expected to be accomplished in February, which I think is pretty much on. We're going to have that meeting on Thursday, I believe, Paul? Thursday, so I'll be able to give you a, a more up-to-date report from the Smithfield Crossings in my Friday weekly report to you, so take a look, look at that. I think what you'll see is that they got a lot done as they planned to in February. Came up a little bit short on the stormwater installation, I think they got to a part where they had to stop work, and they lost seven to 10 days, I think, with some of the weather issues over the last, or during the last 30 days during February. But still, not terribly off, off pace there, but I'll have a little more detail for you on Friday. And Mayor, I mentioned this to you in my weekly report earlier, but I want to make sure that the, the public did know that the Friends of the Park in the last couple of weeks did make a contribution to the, to the town, as you know, is their, their historical promise to try and raise funds to pay for the Shrek. But they did donate to the town $67,500 in the last couple of weeks as part of their fundraising. I think that was several events. Mr. Johnson from the, what's the fall event called?
Raffle and the reverse raffle.
The reverse raffle and the triathlon, that's right. I couldn't remember the reverse raffle, which was a good event. Many of you attended, we appreciate that, but it was a good contribution that will help us a good bit. So I want to make sure everybody publicly understood that contribution, which helps us a tremendous amount. Mayor, if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Any questions from the mayor? As I was saying, if the Friends of the Park donations doesn't have a budget, we go to zero this year, we didn't know what was going to come back to us, and all that is going to be showing that much positive damage. Anything else? No, that's all I have. Any other questions? Good morning. Motion second, those in favor of? Close. adjourned.